Good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming to the Commissioners Meeting this morning. Thank you Commissioners for serving. And we'll start with invocations this morning from Commissioner Acock. And he'll also have the pledge. Mr. Acock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for today. Thank you for your many blessings. We ask for your guidance in running the affairs of this county. And we ask for your guidance in running the affairs of the state and especially our nation. Our nation is in terrible times right now. We pray that our leadership can get together and move forward for the betterment of the country and the people. We also ask for your blessings on our men and women in uniform abroad and at home. They sacrifice so much for us to have the opportunity to have the freedom that we have and to sit and conduct business. They've sacrificed much more than we do. We ask this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Acock.
Yes, sir.
General statutes mandates that the Chairman inquire as to whether any member knows of any non-conflict of interest or appearance of conflict in respect to the matter being brought forward for this day. If any knows of conflict of interest or appearance of conflict, please state so. Thank you. Approval of the minutes, September 30, 2013, with the meeting of Goldsboro and October 1st, 2013.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Bell, thank you. Motion's on the floor to approve these minutes. Mr. Bell, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous. Discussion, adjustment of agenda. My apologies. During our pre-agenda this morning, I failed to recognize Mr. Daughtry's request for a resolution to be put on the agenda this morning in reference to the hospital and Blue Cross Blue Shield. Do each of you have a copy of the resolution?
Yes, sir.
I would like to add that to the agenda, please. And that's, add that as number 10. Under North Carolina Eastern Alliance Corporation. Thank you. Any other adjustments, sir? Discussion on the agenda. Mr. Smith, do you have any adjustments to the agenda?
No, sir. Other than the items, this morning you did have three additional budget amendments added under number 300 Business. And we have added a 1:00 PM work session. So just for anybody who picked up an agenda coming in this morning, you would see a change. There would be a work session at 1:00 PM.
All right. Okay, Mr. Smith, special recognition. This morning, we have employee service pins. Mr. Smith?
Yes. Ask the board if you were. I'd like to ask Ms. Wilson, she would want to start with recognition of employees at one year. So come up and come to my left.
Alyssa Partis, Social Services. Danny Beavers, Board of Elections. Rosemary Blitzer, Board of Elections. Diana Campbell, Health Department. Scott Hisch, Mercy Services. Zalita Graham, Health Department. Mary Cornady, Health Department. Shanita Nguyen, Health Department. Tamara Baltasar, Library. Taylor Granttham, Wayne Net. Harrison Hall, Commercial Medical Services. Kelly Cowell, Wayne Net. Daniel Martinez, Detention Center. Irene Nash, Social Services. Lisa Osterkamp, Social Services. Johnny Pitkin, Jr., Library. Celeste, Services on Aging. Sandra Spata, Dreditch, Services on Aging.
Is that it? Okay. Good luck on that last one. They didn't show up, just I didn't have to say it. Well, I'm gonna tell you the most depressing thing you've ever heard. She got 29 years ago.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, five years.
Royce Acock, Sheriff's Office. Sandra Davis, Animal Control. James Boss, Detention Center. Jordan Hansen, Wayne Net. Jeremy Hooker, Sheriff's Office. Jacqueline Oates, Pat's Office. Charmaine Tudor, Char, excuse me, Social Services. Joseph Hayes, Facility Services. Yolanda Rose, Register of Deeds. Travis Sparks, Sheriff's Office. Kit Walston, Sheriff's Office. Melissa Sheldon, Library.
So they get more confident as you get up. They don't come as much. And we do get pens to all the departments. We make sure they get delivered out.
Mr. Smith, with Psychiatric, we had some people come in. Johnny Pitkin, Jr., from the Library. If you'll come forward.
Five years.
One year.
One year. Okay.
And Melissa Sheldon, if you'll come forward, that's five years.
Okay. All right. Getting confused here.
And Tamara Baltasar, she's one year.
Shake their hands and... One year? Okay.
Thank you so much. Thank you. You guys want us? I think everybody. Pull it away. It's like...
There must have been a shakedown down in security or something. I'm scared to let them in. Ten years.
Teresa Bieber, Social Services. Kimberly Flyer, Social Services. Julian Nails, Planning. Regina Pearson, Detention Center.
All right. There are people here just like family. We've just always been around. But you always find they have good humor. All right, 15 years.
Chris Cowan, Innovation Technology.
He's on vacation. So he's celebrating? Good for him.
He's celebrating.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks.
All right. 20 years.
Joanna Hales, Wayne County Department of Alliance. Elizabeth Lanson, Social Services. Monica Sexton, Social Services. Christopher Werke, Sheriff's Office.
All right. All right. Now he just gone to lying. Come on. Thank y'all. All right, 25 years.
Judy Bluton, Detention Center. Barbara Wilson, Social Services.
Okay. All right. We'll make sure they get those. All right, I was just always curious to see. 30 years, I feel one in there.
Myra Jones, Social Services.
All right.
I was gonna lock it back. 10 years. There's no way. Thank you very much.
We must do something right because they all look young. I'm thinking, there's no way somebody's been here 30 years or 20 years.
How about you stay in the middle, man?
There you go. There you go. There you go. Thank you all very much.
You get a third of you. You just feel like a third of you. Thank you all.
We're screening out some appointments.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. The Appointment Committee met this morning, and I want to thank Commissioner Bill Page and Commissioner John Bell and, of course, Marshall Wilson. We were here before any of the rest of it. We're here at 7:30. So this morning, if you had turned about halfway your agenda, you'll see the first appointment is for the Wayne County Council on Aging. This is a three-year term, and we'd like to recommend Melvin R. Horner be reappointed to that board. And I make that in the form of a motion. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. May. Motion's on the floor to reappoint Melvin Horner to the Wayne County Council of Aging. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Thank you.
If you would turn to Page. We will not act today on the Fremont Board of Adjustment. We got something we need to do on that as far as our committee. So get down to the Wayne County Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. We would like to reappoint, or make an appointment to, for Frida Brock to serve on the Wayne County Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. And that's in the form of a motion. Mr. Chairman.
Motion's on the floor that we appoint Frida Brock to the Wayne County Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. It's a three-year appointment. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's all the appointments for this morning, but I'd like to take just about 30 seconds to ask our applications for these appointments for volunteers has sort of fell off a little bit. I want to encourage the citizens of Wayne County to fill out your applications for any board that you want to serve on. They're all on WayneGov.com. They're there, and you can fill in application online. And just as a reminder, when you fill out an application for these committees, that application is good for two years. After two years, you need to redo your application. This morning, I'd like to ask the public to consider serving on the Wayne County Animal Control Advisory Committee, which Commissioner Bill Page is on. This advisory committee advises as far as animal adoption and education as far as animals are concerned with our shelter. It's a very important, it's a very important position, and we'd like to encourage anyone in the county that care about animals, about their safety and their future, is to fill out an application to come on this advisory committee. So again, I would like to encourage all residents, citizens of Wayne County to look at these appointments. They are very important. All of these are very important because it gets the public involved in the process here in Wayne County. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move on to Board of Commissioners, Committee of Boards. Mr. Bell?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a report this time.
Mr. Daughtry.
My printer didn't work today, so I'm gonna read it. I wanted to let everybody know that I enjoyed the joint meeting with the school board and the commissioners that we met and discussed our capital improvement plans. It was very interesting to see that presented with all of the capital improvements that are on the horizon, because it kind of puts things in perspective. I don't have that exact figure in front of me, but I believe it was almost 250,000, 250 million dollars' worth of capital improvements that are on the horizon for our county. I feel the two boards have got a much better working relationship, and I think that going forward, that we're gonna see some of those capital improvements implemented very shortly. I also attended the Board of Health meeting last week, and I'm happy to report, after months and months and months, we have finally hired a new dentist, and she started working yesterday. That's been a real task to get that behind us. The mobile dental lab unit has agreed to, the purchase price has been negotiated and agreed to. Once that is concluded and the purchase is finalized, then that mobile unit is going to be shipped off for a refurb. And once the refurb is accomplished after the first of the year, then it'll be brought back and put into service. So I'm really excited about the dental lab and its bringing about much-needed dental hygiene for our students and school. I don't know if you are aware of that or not, but with the budget cuts, the hygienist for Wayne County has been cut entirely. So it was good timing that we actually are going to have and implement our own mobile dental lab. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Daughtry. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For time restraints, I'm not gonna go into much detail, but on October 3rd, we had a George Pacific groundbreaking, which is really an exciting time when industries are spanning and/or updating their equipment and creating jobs, no matter how many. We love that. That was a really good tour that we had to see the newest technology and saw a log. It's unbelievable. The conservation, the scrap is almost nonexistent anymore. On October 8th, as Commissioner Daughtry had alluded to, we had the Board of Education and Board of Commissioners joint meeting. Also on that day, and of course, I'm sure that Commissioner Page will say something about this, there was a presentation of the Order of the Longleaf Pine Award to Bill Graham, which was richly deserved by him. The committee, the advisory committee I'm on, the Wayne County Executive Jetport Advisory Committee met, and we discussed, the whole meeting was about the TIP plan, which is the transportation improvement projects for the Wayne County jet port for the next five years. So that will be coming out shortly. Had several meetings with the WCDAs, and I'm happy to say that there's a lot of, there's some exciting things going on as far as economic development and creating jobs. At this point, we can't say a lot because it's in infant stages in a lot of cases, but there's gonna be some times in the next month or so, couple of months, that hopefully we'll be able to announce some more job creation and hopefully some expansion of existing business. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Except, I wanted to ask Mr. Smith if you would, as far as the literacy connection is concerned, if you, I think you found out some information this week. Do you have a report on that, please?
Yes, sir. In fact, I met with Pat Yates yesterday and asked her to prepare a document that would come to the board. They've recently had a fundraiser. They also made requests of the City of Goldsboro and understand what they have allotted, at least $6,000.
That's right.
So we've asked, you know, asked for documentation on that and also to document the impacts based on the $6,000, their fundraiser. The couple thousand that were allotted from the Board of Commissioners above the appropriation for July 1st, and if they would get that, so we would be able to consider that before the November meeting. Sounds like they'll be fine until then, but we have documentation about the grants. So we're expecting something from that board. She said they would meet and they would bring something back to us.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just gonna start with, I'm sorry. I'd like to start now at the end. Mr. Karmody?
Good morning, sir. The only regular scheduled group that I met with beyond our last board meeting that all the rest of my colleagues did not meet with was the Planning Board, the Planning Council, and of course, Mr. Connor Price here to give his report on that this morning. My other, two of my other committees that I meet with is wages, and they are meeting this week, so mine is sort of scheduled right behind our meeting. And I also want to mention the library. It's, I always like to bring that message back to our colleagues here on the board. It's, the progress is going well. Living in Mount Oliver, I have an opportunity to pass there several times, and just not getting close and in their way, you can tell that some of the preliminary work has been finished on the inside that preps them to go full steam, Mr. Mayor. And it's always encouraging when you see them outside doing some decorative building. So, Mr. Smith, they are working, and so I'm confident that we're on our way. So that's pretty much what I have up to this point. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Karmody. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too, remember the school board. I think it's important that, based on as well as this board, what the total picture was. I understand that this plan has many years out. So, you know, I had a little sticker shot with a mountain myself, but you gotta remember it is a flexible plan. But I think everybody knows where we're headed and what we want to do. And I did attend American Legion last week. Bill Graham, who's one of my board members on the Veterans Advisory Board, and a fine gentleman, received the Order of the Longleaf Pine and it's given to by Representative Bell. He is one of a number of veterans that I am being associated with and getting to know that dedicate all their time to veterans' issues. It's amazing what these gentlemen do, and I'm very proud of Bill Graham and what he's doing. I really am. And I hope to continue to work with him as well. Last week, I extended the County Commissioner meeting for Steering Committee, Ag Committee in Raleigh. I would say to other commissioners, if you're not on a steering committee, you should consider getting on one. While this was focused primarily on agriculture, it also gave plenty of updates of everything else that's going on. And got a chance to meet, you know, a lot of the staff and the attorney for Farm Bureau. He was very informative and I've learned a lot from him. One of the biggest things was Rod Fish, who's the Assistant Director of Marketing for the NC Department of Agriculture Consumer Services. He gave a lengthy report that was really good. Let's see, one of the things he's saying, according to him, North Carolina agriculture industry, including food, fiber, and forestry, contributes $74.3 billion to the state's economy, which is nearly one-fifth of the state's income, employs 17% of the workforce. And that is true as well in Wayne County. And if I may, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to set up a steering committee in Wayne County for our pursuit of the Ag Center. So I'm making this motion, and these are the people who have agreed to be on this steering committee. We're not really setting time limits on it at this time, because we'll know when it's time to end when we get to thank Bill. But the following people have agreed to serve. Ross Balance, Johnny Best, Lee Casey, Danny Davis, Kevin Johnson, staff, of course, Lurinda Oberman, Ronald Parks, Bill Page, that would be me, Eddie Pitzer, Howard Scott, Greg Shackelford, Craig West, Debbie Worley, Charlie McLennie, and Julian Acock. We've got a fine group of people here who are very motivated to make this thing happen in Wayne County. And I said about how much it is to the state economy, but Wayne County, it was 200, 763 million, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, $763 million that's contributed to our economy from agriculture and agribusiness. Like, you know, GP, that's one of our agribusinesses. Flowers, Butterball, which is just over the edge, but employs a lot of Wayne County residents, and it goes on. What you've got to grow it, you get it to them, so they can serve it to you, so you can take it home. It's just so important that we stay behind this issue and move forward with it. So that's my motion.
How many people is that?
That is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. Thank you. Motion's on the floor that we establish this steering committee for that Ag Center, Regional Ag Center. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? I think that is unanimous. Thank you.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Mr. Acock?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As it's the time, I'm gonna keep mine short. We do, with what's on the agenda today, we do have all of the voluntary fire departments contracts in and signed. Also, I'd like to follow up on, I think we had a very good productive meeting with the school board, and I think that we're probably in better negotiating terms with them now than we have been in the past, but I think it was a very productive meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Acock. Unfinished business. We had some discussion this morning on unfinished business, and payroll was brought up, and we went into closed session to discuss the recommendations of the council. Mr. Parker?
To discuss concerns about the required attorney.
And we, to be honest with you, ran out of time. And to make the 9 o'clock meeting this morning, so we'll bring that back if it's the wishes of the commission after our work session at 1 o'clock. Bring that back up at that time. The new business. Mr. Smith, number one, the disposition of Sheriff's Office working dog?
Yes.
Get some special guests this morning.
Mm-hmm. We've got, what, Billy Rodenbach?
Devin Sasser.
Sasser, that's right. He always, this is his thing, and then you give me a dollar and I give you a receipt. How about that? Okay?
That'll work.
You get money. Does everybody understand what is happening today? I gave kudos to, this particular Narcotics Patrol dog has been a very good service dog, as I understand, through the Sheriff's Office. And as part of the process, and try to use the right terminology this morning to honor the animal that has served us so well, but once, say, I guess like the rest of us, supporting families said, once you reach retirement, it's time to go home.
Yes, sir.
And that is the case with this dog. Do you want to say anything about the dog? Because, I mean, you, you know... Because, I mean, you, you know, because, I mean, they've become really special to the, to the department.
Yes, sir. Well, over the years that I've actually had the privilege of working with Remco, he was, he's excellent. Absolutely excellent. He's found numerous, numerous amounts of illegal narcotics, as well as prescription pills, drug seize funds, assisted in many felony and misdemeanor drug arrests. So, he's been an asset to the department. We hate to lose him, but I believe, if I'm not badly mistaken, this month he turns 12 years old. And their life expectancy is 12 to 15 years in that specific breed. So, it's our feelings that he needs to go home and serve the rest of his life as a family dog.
That's great. And the request is being made for Deputy Billy Ridenbar will assume responsibility and all the expenses of keeping the dog. And we are recommending that the Board of Commissioners declare the sheriff's office working dog Remco no longer, I hate to say any value, but to the sheriff's office and allow Deputy Billy Ridenbar to purchase Remco in the amount of $1.
Recommendation then is from Mr. Smith, that we, that we honor this disposition here of Remco to Deputy Ridenbar. And thank you, Deputy Sasser, for coming this morning for doing that. So, the motion's on the floor. What's the pleasure, the board? Motion's on the floor. Thank you, Mr. Mayo, for making that motion. Any discussion?
Just one question.
Mr. Payton?
What's the breed?
Belgian Malinois. Yes, ma'am. He's actually, and the reason he's not here today, the new dog we have purchased, he's actually in school in the Borough of Wilmington area. So, he's there for eight weeks to get her polished up, to bring her back. So, hopefully, the latter part of November, she'll be back on the road in full service. And she's gonna be, from what I've seen so far, she's gonna be awesome.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item of business, Board of Elections presentation, Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir. I'd like to ask this morning that Director of Board of Elections, Ms. Rosemary Blizzard, come forward. I think she has a report for us.
I will try to be as feel-good as that last presentation, but I'm pretty sure it won't be. I was asked to sort of just give you an update on what we're doing right now. And it's sort of fitting that we've received our one-year pens, because what a difference a year makes. We do have an election coming up in November. We are working currently, the election will have, the several of the sanitary district boards will be up. Belfast, Paitown, Eastern Wayne, Southeastern Wayne, Fork, and Southern Wayne sanitary districts will all have positions on the ballot this year. In the municipal section, we have the town of Eureka, Mount Olive mayor and all of their commissioner seats. Pikeville mayor and commissioner, two seats. And then Seven Springs mayor, commissioner, two seats, as well as the Village of Walnut Creek councilman. We have two seats plus one unexpired term. We have begun the process of mailing out absentee ballots as they have been requested by eligible citizens. We actually have a meeting today at 1:00 P.M. It's our first absentee meeting. It's legally scheduled by general statutes. If anyone's interested, this is also the meeting where we will test our high-speed counter, lovingly referred to as the M650, so that you can see that our test deck is prepared and we are in the process of completing testing for the equipment. That'll be in use in March, November. Sorry, I'm already in 2014 a little bit. One-stop voting starts Thursday at 11:00 A.M. in our office. We specifically asked the Board of Elections to set that time from 11:00 A.M. to 7:00 P.M. to afford citizens who may be in Goldsboro, working or taking care of business here at 5:00 o'clock, that they would have time to run by our office and vote if they're eligible. And also citizens who are eligible that may not be in Goldsboro would have time after business hours to come in and take advantage of one-stop voting. Historically, this election has been not as well-attended as others. And what that translates into is a very high cost per ballot, because we have certain obligations we have to meet with the general statutes regardless of how many people show up. And so, it's always, we're trying to make it more convenient for the voters, and we hope they take advantage of that extra time, because I'm gonna have staff in our office for the next 13 days till 7:00 P.M. at night for the convenience of the voters. We will have, the election starts 6:30 Tuesday, November the 5th, ends at 7:30. And we're gonna just do everything we're supposed to do. I don't know if you've got any other questions about that process. It is busy in our office, not quite as busy as November last year, thank goodness. There's a reason why those only come every four years. But if you've got any questions about that process, I'll be happy to answer any.
Any questions? Mr. Mayo?
It's, thank you for coming. It's, I see you have some maps on the, on the wall here. Shows the sanitary voting district and the commissioner districts overlay.
Right.
Okay.
What that is, is we were asked, the way the sanitary districts are in Wayne County, and I'll be very upfront, Wayne County's the first county that I've worked in that has had sanitary districts, period. So, this is as new to me as it probably is to people listening. But there, there is a sanitary district that was drawn. Most of these were done in the late 80s, based on my research in the office. And that constitutes the voting district. So, if you physically reside in the district itself, then you get to vote in the election. It's the same with county commissioner district, house district, senate district. There are some areas in Wayne County that, from what I can tell, appear to be serviced by the individual water districts, but do not reside in the drawn, adopted sanitary district. And there were some questions about how many people that ended up being. I was able, with the help of the planning department, who comes through for me more times than they really should have to, to generate this map so that you can see the numbers. And it's, I'm far-sighted, but not quite that far-sighted. If you overlay the county commissioner districts in District 1, you have approximately 4,012 voters who don't fall into a sanitary district, but may receive services from that district. But keep in mind, as far as election law goes, services has no bearing on participation in the election. It's purely where you live. District 2 has 1,902. District 3, 490. District 4, 580. And these are all listed on that map. District 5, 2507, and District 6, 0. Now, I am not a sanitary district law expert, don't really want to be. I can put you in contact with some individuals who may have a better understanding of what all that means. And of course, the numbers that I'm giving you are registered voters. They may have a will and don't receive services. I don't know the answer to that question as to how that breaks out. We also overlaid it over the North Carolina House districts. And as that, respectively, District 4 is 4,796 voters. District 10, 2405. And District 21, 2290. And as I said, it is registered voters. I don't know, as far as population goes, of people who may not be registered or may not be eligible to be registered, how that would break down. All total, it's about 9,409, if I remember correctly.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayo?
That, if my understanding, of course, maybe Mr. Parker or somebody served on the sanitary districts. But these 9,409 that are, that are not in, included in the sanitary district, if my understanding is correct, is that these people are not able to vote for the sanitary district board?
That is correct.
Is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, District 1 happens to be my district. And I have taken a look at the map real closely. And where I live, there's a fine line. I think, and I as a commissioner, am not in an area that I can vote. And my point is, is that the citizens of Wayne County, in my opinion as a commissioner, need to be where they can vote. If they're getting services or not getting services, they should still be in a water district. It's just the right thing to do. So, that's my opinion as a commissioner. They should, all citizens of Wayne County should have access to voting as far as a sanitary district. So, you know, that's just, that's just my opinion. I just think it needs to happen.
Mr. Payton?
Just to follow up on what Commissioner Mayo was saying, is I've looked at the maps and I know I live in an area that's, that I can't vote in. I know that. You know, that would kind of concerning that it would be that way. Because I know the upside of it is that I don't have to pay the tax, but yet I have no voice in what goes on either. I think what happened is, as the sanitary districts grew after they were drawn, they reached out and started getting into areas of people like myself that were actually, were not in the lines. And they've never moved the lines. I think that needs to be considered. I know we took some action back in February, I believe. And I think we need to look at that again for us, talk to them, find the avenues to make those corrections. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Payton. Mr. Akon?
Yes, sir. I'm in agreement that, you know, this problem needs to be looked at. But the problem I have with it this morning, this is the first time I've seen those maps, and this is the first time I've seen this documented, and it's quite thick. I just, I've got to have more time to look at it. I'm not saying that I'm opposed or for, but I just, so this is the first time I've seen it this morning. And I just need some time to, to look at it and go over it.
Thank you, Mr. Akon. Any other questions, comments? For Ms. Blizzard?
I, I have one question. Whenever the early voting starts in your office, is that, what location is that again?
That's at 209 South Williams Street.
Okay. And that's Thursday?
It starts Thursday at 11:00 A.M. It will be every weekday, starting Thursday from 11:00 to 7:00. And the only Saturday that we will be open is the legally required one Saturday prior to the election, which is November the 2nd.
Okay.
And that will be from 9:00 until 1:00.
Okay. And when the, these voters come to vote, then are they given a ballot?
Yes. It's the same process that we have used in previous elections. If you voted early during the 2012 election, it will be the same process. They will give their name and address, will verify that they are eligible to vote and receive a ballot style. That's the terminology we use in the office. And then they'll receive their ballot, and they'll process it in a tabulator, the same as was done last November. Those totals will not be tabulated until the day of the election. And the results will not be released until after 7:30 election night. And that's per the general statutes.
Okay. And let's say Mr. Payton and Mr. Mayo came, and they received their ballot. Would there be a name of any of the candidates or any of those running for the office in sanitary districts? Would they have a name on their ballot?
Well, what would happen in that case is, any voter that walks in, in any election, we will look up their name and confirm that we have the correct name and address based on our system. And the way that the state database is set up is, when we set up the election, you either receive any one of the 14 ballot styles we have in this election, or you receive a designation as no ballot, which means based on your jurisdictional assignments, you're not eligible to participate in the election. So, if someone were to come in, say, from the city of Goldsboro, which is likely, seeing as how we're right there in the downtown area, then we would look up their name and it would say that you do not receive a ballot. Now, under the federal law, if they are absolutely adamant that they get one, then what we would do is try to figure out which ballot they might be eligible for. Now, this won't make any sense in this particular election, because you're either in the city or you're not. But you would vote provisionally at that point, and then the board would consider the fact that you aren't eligible by jurisdiction to vote and make a decision about whether or not that ballot be counted.
My, my question, I guess, I'm gonna get a little bit further into the weeds here. Getting back to the possibly 9,409 people that are voters, and they come to the polls and they receive a ballot, and they want to vote for a specific individual running for the sanitary district boards, whoever they might be in the county, and I don't know exactly what numbers there are.
Right.
But would, would they receive a ballot with, with one of those individual's names on it?
They would, but they would be voting it provisionally, which means it would not be processed through the tabulator like eligible voters would be, and it would be sent to the board for consideration following the election and prior to canvas.
So, their vote doesn't count, or does it count?
If they're not eligible to vote by, by residence in the jurisdiction, then they would vote provisionally, and the board would have to consider the fact that they do not live in the jurisdiction. As they're currently drawn.
And when you do provision balancing, you canvass those, and you ask, I remember one of the elections being, provision ballots being counted on a city council election this past election period. And it took a lot of time.
It does.
And it cost a lot of money. Who does, who pays for that time if we would have to do provisional ballots for sanitary districts?
Well, the expenses for the sanitary and municipal district elections are billed back to the individual boards and municipalities. And anything that's unique to the election, meaning it's our regular office, like my salary, I'm gonna be there whether we have an election or not, we don't bill that back. But anything that's specific to the election itself is billed back to the individual boards and municipalities.
So, let's just say that 2,000 of the 9,000 people wanted to vote for a sanitary district individual, and their votes would be provisional. How long would that take?
Quite a while. The process of provisional ballots, regardless of the election, is the provisional ballots are sealed when they're voted, and those sealed envelopes are brought back to our office, where my staff has to go through the process of data entry into the provisional module. And that's just basically a piece of software that attaches to our SEEMS database and allows us to just keep track electronically of who's voted what provisional and where. And then we will start the process, and by we, I mean myself and staff, of researching the eligibility of that voter. For example, if it's a person who was not currently residing in the district, then we would make a recommendation to the board that this person was not eligible by jurisdiction to participate in this election, and then they would have the final determination as to whether or not to process that ballot. If the board voted not to process that ballot, the ballot would never be opened for review. They're only opened if they're approved by the Board of Elections for counting.
Okay. Mr. Mayo?
Just, just to sum up, as far as I'm concerned, as a commissioner, I want to make, I want to make it clear that the, my concern is not for the, for the goal of trying to take over or do anything to control sanitary districts. My concern is, is that every citizen in Wayne County should have the right to vote in any election if they are a resident in this county. And my only goal as a commissioner is to make sure that every citizen is in a district. That's all this is all about. I don't want the public or anyone else to think that this is anything else other than the rights of the citizen. So, what I would like to, to, to just say is that Mr. Akon is right. All of us commissioners, every one of us, need, need to know in depth of what we're looking at. But in the process of doing that, I would like to ask Mr. Parker, Mr. Smith, that during that time, what can we do, prepare ourselves? What can we do to bring this back, this resolution that we did back on the 5th of February of 2013 to the General Assembly? What would we need to do to bring this back up and get it to the surface again? So, that's, that's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have a response to that, Mr. Smith, or Mr. Parker?
Well, we certainly can look at it. When you adopted that resolution before and sent it to the legislature, the legislature was not interested. was not interested in granting your wish. There is a statutory provision that exists now to allow you to expand, uh, the sanitary districts under certain conditions if the people who live outside of them want to come into them. But the easier way would, to expand them would have been if the legislature had given you the authority you requested, uh, back in February.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. Just whatever the law is stating, I think he's correct, but it seems like the only one.
As I, as I recall, back in February, um, we received this and the vote was six to one from this commission board to send this to the General Assembly, uh, and to, uh, allow the commissioners, as it states here, that, that those who do not, have not seen this, uh, that, um, it says, "Therefore, it be resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby call upon the Wayne County Legislative Delegation and the North Carolina General Assembly to immediately adopt legislation to allow the majority of the Wayne County Board of Commissioners to modify the boundaries of each sanitary district within Wayne County to include all properties serviced by each sanitary district within Wayne County." And as I recall, um, the media picked up on that and, um, it was, um, indicated, uh, that we were interested, as, as Commissioner has just mentioned, that we were interested in taking over the sanitary districts. That is not true. Our concern today is, as Mr. Mayo has, has mentioned, is to get 9,409 people able to vote in this county. And, uh, the expense that it's going to take, and I understand the train has already left the station for this election, so it starts, it starts Fri- Thursday and of course, we can't do anything. I mean, but this has been on our desk since February and at the public comment section last meeting, and I've had some phone calls because I have approximately 400, some people in my district that, that cannot vote for, uh, some of those who were running for the sanitary district, um, in, in my district, um, indicated this at our last meeting. And again, that is something that we've picked up in public comments, that people come and make those comments and we listen to that. And then, of course, we do our due diligence as commissioners and tap in and network to those, uh, in staff and, uh, Ms. Blizzard and her staff and with, uh, our, uh, GIS has made it very available, not only to see where each commissioner, uh, has and the numbers that we have of people in our districts that cannot vote in the sanitary election, but also with the General Assembly, because this is who we sent that to in February. Um, you know, if, if, if they've gone through a long session and now they're in a short, short session will be kicking back up in April, uh, or May, I'm not exactly sure, but, um, it'd be interesting if we could, uh, is, is there some way we can get this to them prior to short sessions so they could start working on it?
If the board were to adopt a resolution, resolution, they could, generally speaking, in the short session, it will not, uh, consider local legislation that all your local, uh, representatives and senators, uh, don't agree.
Hmm. So we are in impasse here, I guess, as, it, we can't do anything about this election, but it, it's something that has been brought to our attention and, um, the liaison, Mr. Dottery, you're the liaison between the commission and, and the Board of Elections. Is there something that you'd like to add and maybe, uh, to move forward with this? I think you brought this up in February too, so.
Well, yes. Um, you know, it, it was very clear that, that we had a problem here. Um, and the resolution was brought forth, uh, it was passed, we sent it on to the legislature and as our attorney has stated, in their wisdom, they chose not to take up this matter. Uh, and all we can do at this point is to, uh, and I encourage, uh, other board members and the members of the public to contact them and ask them if they possibly can come to an agreement on a local bill, uh, in the short session. But as the chairman has stated, the train's already left the station. There really isn't anything we can do in regards to this particular election. Hopefully going forward, we can find some way to resolve this and get these approximately 10,000 residents within a sanitary district. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dottery. I would like to put a motion to the floor that, uh, we, uh, have the county attorney to craft a letter of, of, uh, a request that the General Assembly look again at this resolution that this, uh, board passed in February and act on this ASAP. And copy it to the, um, election law chairman. I believe that is Mr. Davis, uh, House Member Davis. He's the chairman of, um, the election law in the Hornet County. Okay. Any discussion? Mr. Akon?
Like I, you know, said earlier, this is, I'm, I'm not for or against, uh, but I just wished I had a, had the opportunity to see these maps, uh, and this, uh, did these general statutes, uh, before voting on it this morning. Uh, is, all y'all know, I previously sat on a sanitary district board and this was discussed several times by that board. Uh, and at that time, uh, I don't know whether it was really pursued or not, or whether it was, uh, brought to the, uh, county commission board in the past. Uh, I, I do not know, but I just, uh, I'd say I wish I had a, had the opportunity to see these maps and, and look at them, uh, a little closer. I agree that the citizens in the county should have the right to vote on issues that pertain to their well-being. Yes, on the comments.
Any other discussion? Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dottery?
I think we have, um, brought this, a matter up. We got a lot of, um, feedback, um, and specifically, we got some feedback from our sanitary boards. And, and I would ask that we, um, since we've already attempted to go through the legislative process to no avail, I, I would ask that maybe we bring in representatives from the sanitary districts and have a work session and try to find some way to work this in a different way of convincing, hopefully from our point of view and discussions with the sanitary boards, to find some way to resolve this in-house almost, here in Wayne County. Um, I think there are, there is some pushback, uh, to handle this from the General Assembly, so I would hope that maybe we could find some way to resolve that here before we go that route of, uh, pursuing that matter again. Uh, I, I would ask that maybe we, uh, table this matter and that we bring it up before, uh, a work session and bring the sanitary district representatives in.
Mr. Mayo?
Uh, Mr. Dottery, uh, my understanding, uh, is that, is that the, the sanitary district lines cannot be changed by statute at this time, except by an action of the General Assembly. Is that correct?
That's correct. Mr. Parker?
The people that are outside of the district that want to join the district can petition.
Yes.
Got to have a certain number. So there is something in the statute that would allow the districts to be enlarged.
It's 15% of the resident freeholders.
Okay.
In a given area.
Particular area that wants to join.
Right. But the, the, the sanitary districts, do they have, do they have the, the authority to change the district lines themselves?
No.
No? Has to go through the legislature or through a, a citizen petition?
Citizen petition and then the county commissioners would change it if the petition was there, the commissioners wanted to change it, I think.
Okay. Uh, so, uh, that, that was, that was the thing that I, you know, why hasn't been, why hasn't it been done before now? That's the question. If, my, like, again, my only concern is, is that the citizens of Wayne County need to have the right to vote. That's, that's the bottom line. And so, uh, going through the legislature and readdressing this to the legislature as we did back in February is, is certainly, is certainly the way to go because, uh, that's what we were told when we passed the resolution in February and that's what we need to continue to do.
Mr. Akon?
Yes, sir. I think General Statute 130A48 says it's 51%, not 15%.
Looks like there's two different, I, I assumed in the, one of the attorney to look at it, one is a procedure for actually incorporating a district altogether, the other, I think the terminology is to increase the size or expand. So I want the attorney, he would need to look at that.
Okay. Any, just still discussion? Mr. Payne?
Yeah, I did it, thought it was brought forward, it's, it's not a bad idea, you know, we did have some pushback before. This resolution is still in effect, is that correct, Mr. Parker? Is this resolution still in effect, the one that we have?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. There's nothing.
I always had a problem reminding legislators, but it would be nice if we could have somewhere from, you know, sanitary districts to come in, to talk with us and, because if we could come to an agreement locally, it'd make this a lot more seamless effort pushing this forward to the legislature and I think it would, um, make it work a lot quicker. It's just, just my fault. And, um, but I would like to make sure that our legislature knew that we were discussing this.
That's what, that's, that's, the motion on the floor is just that. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you read the motion, please?
Yes, sir. To the county attorney to draft the letter requesting the Wayne County legislators to look again at the February resolution and act on it as soon as possible with a copy sent to the election law chairman, Davis, of Hornet County.
Okay. Don't want to get off the track here. We're still just having discussion on that particular motion.
Just wanted to finish up, you know?
Mr. Payne?
I could support going ahead and sending the letter, but I still would like to have a work session with, you know, sanitary districts to discuss that, so we can come to an agreement locally.
Okay. Mr. Kamarty?
Well, I, I guess my question, my wonderment is, I've heard the word pushback, uh, some reference to that. Is it that there's just been a oversight over time and the folk didn't get a chance to be in the districts or, or is there a resistance to, uh, the water district leadership having folk added in that they live in or, I mean, I'm just, I'm sort of curious as to where the block is or, or whatever.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Mr. Dottery brought that pushback issue up, so if you would expound on that.
We're getting deep here.
Nope. Maybe you can explain this more.
Yes, sir.
I, I think basically from my understanding, the sanitary districts were established with defined boundaries when they originally were incorporated. And over a period of time, additional subscribers or, uh, clients were signed up by those sanitary districts that lived outside of those boundaries. So they were receiving service from that sanitary district, but there never was a changing of the lines to include those that were outside of the original boundaries. Now we're in a situation where there are approximately 10,000 that are outside. So I think it's, I, I think the sanitary districts want to include those individuals. I think it's a matter in which it, they just haven't looked at it that closely in the past and we're at the point that we're at now. So I think it's formulating some way to solve the issue. Uh, and again, I, I, I think that, uh, e- even though I don't disagree with the motion necessarily, I think that what we need to do is to reach out to sanitary districts, have a work session and find some way to try to resolve it locally, maybe at the same time that we are in fact talking to the legislature. But I don't think we've done that yet to find out what their, their problems are in regards to changing those district lines. I hope that answered your question because it is a confusing talk.
Well, I, I guess that gets close to where if there's a stumbling block, we look to remove it and if there's just a mistake, we look to correct it. And if there's a law that need to be passed, someone needs to get together and pass it, whether that be something that is at the, a level of the legislatures in Raleigh or something that may be designated for this board to, let's just research it.
Mr. Kamarty? What district do you live? District two? District two? You have 1,902 people in your district that cannot vote in this election, starting Friday. Um, this again was brought up in February and the boards, the sanitary boards knew about this and the, the representatives knew about this since February. And here we are, three days from an election process, and we have 9,409 people in this county who cannot vote. This, that's all we're discussing. That's all this resolution explains is that we would like in February to take this issue of these people not being able to be in a district and vote. And here we are in October and they still can't vote. All I'm asking, again in the motion, is to send this to the people who do make the rules and that is the legislatures. And that's what this is asked for. That's all the motion is, is to send them this resolution and act, and ask them to act on it ASAP, as soon as possible. And that is whenever they want to. Mr. Akon?
Yes, sir. Uh, I just want to make it perfectly clear to the general public and the citizens of Wayne County, I am not opposed to everyone that should have the right to vote, uh, be excluded. And I think we're going in the right direction. Uh, we just need to, uh, make sure that everyone's that's involved is, uh, is a player and, uh, I certainly don't have a, any opposition to the resolution, other than I just want to make sure that, that everyone that's in, involved has a, a voice and a say in what we do.
Sure. Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Akon. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman? Before you go, I have to ask, the attorney is looking at.
Mr. Smith?
The 130A69 on the procedure of extension, but there is right after section E going to F, if you want to explain that, because there is an avenue, so, because this is new to us too, but.
I think the difference in the percentages, the 15% is what would be requesting an election to get that area annexed. If 51% were to sign the petition, you wouldn't have to have the election. If everybody within the district were to sign it, you wouldn't have to have the election to be annexed. So there are really three, but the, the resolution that you adopted back in February, um, puts all that aside and allows you to do it without any of those procedures if it were to be.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dottery?
Would you possibly consider, uh, adding to your motion that we schedule a work session on this matter with the sanitary districts?
You can make an amendment if you would like, Mr. Dottery.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I would, uh, make an amendment, ask for an amendment to your motion, that we, uh, add to it, that we will schedule a work session at some time over the next 90 days, uh, with the sanitary districts to try to find some resolution to the matter.
Okay. The amendments on the floor. Any discussion? So the amendment is, uh, been brought up, it will be voted on first. Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, raise your hand. All those opposed? That is unanimous? All those opposed, that is unanimous? Then we'll go to the motion. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All those opposed? Thank you. That motion passes. Thank you. Any other discussion on this matter? We appreciate your staff, we appreciate you, you've been here a year, you've hit the ground running, as we talked about last year. We wish you well during this election process. We hope to get this, so everybody who comes can vote, and you won't have to spend the, the monies and ask us for a budget amendment, because you've had to do all of this, not knowingly, and all of a sudden you have to spend these, these funds. But just thank you so much for being here this morning.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. We have ten o'clock, it says quarter after, public comments at this time. We'll go ahead and start public comments. You have four minutes. Please come up to the podium, state your name and your address and phone number.
Kevin Hayes, seven twenty-eight Country Club Road, Mount Olive, nine one nine six five eight five three four two. I would like to thank commissioners for working on the issue with the sanitary district. This is something I brought back up in, back in February. I was one of the people that was affected by it, and I knew that one person not having right to vote was to me, but now we have close to ten thousand. This, it should be, the system should be outraged at this. They should contact their state representatives. That would be the easiest way to fix this issue, according to state law, petition. My special petition is very hard to get people to sign petitions, so that would be a very difficult road to extend the sanitary vote, voting districts and sanitary districts. But I would like to commend the commissioners for their work on this issue, and hopefully within, by the next sanitary district, we, election, we can resolve this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chase.
Good morning.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Wanted to just elaborate on the K-9 unit REM code, just say a few words about that. I do appreciate the donation of the dog back. A lot of people may not realize that these K-9 units, when I first established those units, may not realize that every dog that we've ever owned, except for one, has been purchased by drug seized monies, including the new one that will be replacing that, that dog will be purchased by drug seized monies. And we do have, we have one bloodhound in the past that was purchased by an individual for the sheriff's department, and that was a company, that was Strickland Insurance Agency. But we're appreciating these dogs. A lot of people may not know what the dogs are capable of doing, they have been to other counties, assisted many other counties in surrounding areas. They are able to do cadaver searches on land and water, search for the recovered body, and article searches, along with the drug and tracking. We'll bring that up to your attention there. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate the good job you're doing out there, too, Sheriff. Thank you. Two minutes.
All right. Call group, you're up. Five eight seven, Gulfboro, North Carolina. Repeat, as I introduced myself, last commission meeting. As a citizen reporter, there's three high priorities: securing the communications between the citizens and the citizens, citizens and the elected, and the citizens and the elected appointees. And boy, have I been on the Odyssey since last meeting, as I walked out the door, eleven days straight on one matter. The gentleman back there, though, they said you can't speak, you've got three minutes. There was a matter, you got it. Real quick, Mr. Pate, and as Vic Miller, chairman of the Veteran Advisory Committee's phone number and email address he provided me is dysfunctional. Do you have a viable, functional phone number and email address for him, or is that classified?
That was Sheriff personally.
That's classified, okay. Let's see if there's a state director on this matter. I would ask the news artist reporter present, does he recognize that the elections, I officially contested the elections in two thousand and twelve. This is absent from news artist reporting, news server reporting, and they would censor my ability to buy space to inform the public of why. The elections are contested on three fundamental reasons: democracy is broke when fee speech replaces free speech. It's absolutely broke when that fee speech is sold at an arbitrary price, and it's absolutely positively broke when that fee speech is sold, not sold at any price. And, Mr. Daughery, you were on the Board of Elections at one time, is that correct?
Correct.
Not now, but between now and next meeting, I welcome you in writing to educate the public how would a citizen explore with the Wayne County Board of Elections their understanding of the general statutes that secure free and fair elections, that the public would know that they are qualified to meet that need. If you put that in writing to me, I'd most appreciate it. And I would ask the-
Mr. Drew, address the board, please, with comments. Mr. Drew?
Well, I can present questions, whether you answer them, I'm free to present questions, am I not?
Yes, you are.
And I had a question for Chief Legal Counsel, and he's gone.
No, sir. Address the board, please, sir.
Okay. I was going to ask him, as I asked Mr. Edwards of the Board of Education, he can answer in due time, hopefully, as I've asked the governor. When I left here, I went to the Wayne County Sheriff's Department and the Gulfboro Police Department, and presented an open letter to both departments. And sought to deliver another, there's four peace officer entities in Wayne County. The third one was the Highway Patrol out here on Seventy. If I was with any of those departments, I'd want to know the censorship of the board commissioners and the newspapers in this town that would delay the understanding of ideas to reduce the risks that they face every day. As I addressed in the PS, I'd buy space and publish the open letter. Though in seeking to secure it to the Highway Patrol, I'd ask Chief Legal Counsel, as I did Mr. Edwards, as I did the governor. Does he recognize the Sergeant Burton of the Highway Patrol's email address as a public record or classified? I would ask Mr. Borden again, would he recognize the head secretary to the governor? I can't say her name right now, I haven't wrote it. But his chief secretary, would he recognize her email address as a public record or classified? They say when you're communicating with a large entity, the old saying is, in business, you're communicating with Ma' Bell. Anybody know what I'm talking about?
Thank you, Mr. Drew.
All right. That's old school business, communication.
Any others would like to make comments?
My name's Steve Hamilton, nine seventeen eleventh street, Old Borough. I'm the district manager of Wayne Water Districts, which represents five of the sanitary districts that you're talking about. I've been with the districts for a little over three years. During that time, there hasn't been any person contact any of my boards requesting that they be annexed into the districts. From what I understand, in the past, there have been several areas that requested annexation. They requested by presenting a petition with over fifty-one percent of the homeowners' signatures. The boards, sanitary boards approved it. This was then passed on to the State Board of Health, who approved the annexation. You know, we don't have the power to annex, we do have the power to tax. So when you start talking about pulling people into the districts without their ability to vote on it, you're actually, in my opinion, you're, you're basically putting a tax, a potential for a tax on those citizens without them actually having a, a vote or a say in that matter. I think that's the reason that the state legislature originally gave several options for annexation: fifty, fifteen percent to put it to a vote, fifty-one percent to put it in the form of a petition, and then a hundred percent to basically make it an automatic thing. Again, none of my boards has ever opposed an annexation. None of my boards has ever indicated any desire to oppose an annexation of any properties into the districts. But again, I think the legislatures, when they set up this law, they did it in such a fashion that it gave the citizens an opportunity to state their, whether they want to be in the district, and whether they don't, by, you know, following the statute, not by a forced annexation. And again, that's my personal opinion, that's not for my boards.
I have a question, Mr. Hamilton. Does each sanitary district board set the rates, order rates?
Yes.
Does each sanitary board set the TAP fees or the TAP-on fees whenever a customer wants service?
Yes, they do.
Okay. Do those that get this service that are outside of the voting district, do they have a say-so on what the fee is or what the rate is?
Not, not specifically, no, they don't.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, the comment, public comments section is over. Next on the agenda, budget amendments. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. I find it's Officer Ms. Holt, she can come forward, please, and we've got just a small number of amendments this morning, shouldn't take me just a moment. And we did have three additional that you, I asked you to insert in your book this morning.
We're going to begin today with number one nineteen and number one twenty-six, which are both for the juvenile crime, crime prevention. Number one nineteen is an increase of thirty dollars in miscellaneous reimbursements and an increase to the expenditure. The reason for this budget amendment is because the funds are received upfront, and the Connect Four did not spend all the funds last year in twelve thirteen, and they must return them to the state. And so this is crossing over years, and this is getting the budget amendment, so it can return the funds to the state, to JCPenney. And also, the next one is the same way, and it's for Wayne County Structure Day, and it's by five thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars. We received the funds, and we need to send it back.
It was a pleasure, the board. Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir, Mr. Pate?
I believe we adopt one nineteen and one twenty-six. Motion's on the floor that we adopt this budget amendment. Any discussion?
All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, that is unanimous. Thank you.
Budget amendment number one twenty-one is to record the receipt of revenues for concealed weapons and fingerprint fees, and to require, budget for the associated expenditure. Fingerprint fees are one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, concealed weapon fees, two thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I move adoption. Thank you, Mr. Daughery. Motion's on the floor that we adopt this amendment. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous.
Number one twenty-five is for the library, is the earmark Wayne County Public Library Friends Donation for Basket Weaving Supplies for the Program. This is to anticipate the revenue for one hundred thirty-six seventy-four and increase the expenditure.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Kamarty?
I move this be accepted as presented.
Motion's on the floor that we accept this recommendation on this amendment, budget amendment. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed?
Okay, the next one's your walk-ons. Number one twenty-nine is for EDTAP. This is for the ROTE funds that y'all have had the public hearing on the last couple of meetings, and we've been talking about. We have received word that these funds have been released to Wayne County, and this is, this budget amendment is to, to get our budget in, coordinated with the funds that have been set aside. We needed to increase the EDTAP, EDTAP funds, eight thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars, the RGP funds, seventeen thousand five hundred and one dollars, and the ROTE funds, eight thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. That was work first, ROTE.
Mr. Chairman, I move adoption. Thank you, Mr. Daughery. Motion's on the floor that we adopt this amendment. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous.
The next budget amendment, number one thirty, is to reappropriate funds for a sign at the walking trail for the senior center. The reason we need this budget amendment is, this was a part of the capital program when we were building the senior center, and we're just now getting the sign up. So these funds were out there, and we have not budgeted for them in this current year, at seven hundred dollars.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Kamarty?
I move this amendment be accepted as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Kamarty. Motion's on the floor that we accept the recommendation for this budget amendment. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you.
Number one thirty-one is for the Home and Community Care Block Grant, and this is for wages, and this is to adjust the budget to the actual grant, increasing by three hundred and seventy-eight dollars, and increasing the revenue by three hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Pate?
I believe we accept this amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Pate. Motion's on the floor that we accept this budget amendment. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Holt. The next item is the effect of the federal government shutdown on the county of Wayne. October first, we know that the federal government shut its doors, and it greatly affected Wayne County. I instructed the county manager that morning, about seven thirty, by phone call, to immediately start a process with his department heads to, to have reports by this date of all, of what the federal government's doing to affect and have an effect on, on this county. And he has done so. He's got his department heads here. There's been a lot of questions, been a lot of interest in what the federal government's doing to the state, but of course, we want to know what it's doing locally, right here in Wayne County, and how it affects the citizens of this county. So, Mr. Smith, turn it over to you at this time.
Okay, thank you. And talking with Ms. Holt, and then talk to the departments, the folks that you'll see here today, they vary in impact, and obviously, our two largest areas being impacted are health and Department Social Services. The areas that we're looking at next are Gateway, Transportation, Service on Aging, Cooperative Extension, and Sheriff's Office and Detention Center. And in many of the cases of sheriff, cooperative extension, and service on aging, and most of those, they have programs or, or grants or things that are coming through that we have not begun spending the dollars, therefore, there really is no impact at this time, because we've held off like the Twenty First Century and Cooperative Extension, those type things, and we've held off on expenditure, so there is no budget impact at this time. But, obviously, there's service impact, because we're not beginning the program, so, but we're trying to hold off on, in some of those areas. So what I would, I know in the sheriff's example, they have a couple of issues. For instance, there is a, for SCAP grant that we get to assist us with illegal aliens in the detention center, and that is, we do not budget for that money, we never know what it's going to be, so, right now, they're saying that's on hold. So there's, you know, several thousand dollars that we may not receive, however, we don't budget for it. When we get it, it's extra dollars a year to assist with the jail. So we try to look at some of these federal programs, because they are, are always susceptible to cuts or changes. So I, I would, with services on aging, cooperative extension, sheriff's office, I really don't think it's necessary for them to come up at this time, because there really is no impact as far as dollars at this time. However, health DSS and Gateway?
Gateway.
And Gateway, I would like the three of them to come up and report, because those are actual dollar and service impact. So if we could do that, and for the chairman, I was just saying, cooperative extension, service on aging, sheriff's office, this time, really not necessarily come up, it's just service, but for health DSS and Gateway, I would like them to come up. So I'd ask Gateway, is Lynn behind, if she? If she would come up first and maybe give a brief on the impacts that she's seen, and then if Ms. Holt needs to add anything at that time, as far as budget.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As you know, Gateway has been undergoing several major changes over the last few months in an effort to turn the business around. I have continued to focus on the financial aspects of the business, as I indicated at the September commissioners' meeting. I will again point to my goal to establish a minimum of three months of reserves, and how absolutely imperative it is that this is accomplished. The government shutdown was certainly not expected, however, it just brings to the forefront how important it is to be able to manage in a crisis situation and analyze all-
how important it is to be able to manage in a crisis situation and analyze all options available until we can meet that goal of establishing reserves. At this time, I recommend that Gateway continue operations as normal. I propose that there will be no reduction in service and no employees will be furloughed. Based on our current cash on hand, accounts receivable status, and implemented expense controls, it is my determination that the operation can be continued without interruption. In addition to this, we have just received great news about grant funding. First, we received notice on October 11th that NC DOT Deputy Secretary Walls confirmed that NC DOT will use state funds to reimburse federal grants for CTP 5311 funds for the period covering July 1st through September 30th, 2013. Outstanding payments due from NC DOT July through September is $75,334. I have contacted PTD staff and have been told they are expediting contracts to be executed. This is very promising to recoup expenses for those three months. Second, I have worked with staff remaining at PTD regarding the rope grant that you recently approved for submission. They have immediately reviewed our application and submitted this to be processed for payment, and I understand from Pam Holt that this notification has been in fact received. We expect to see this in the bank this week and should be approximately $200,000. This will be used by WOC, DSS, Services on Aging, and Gateway to continue providing rope trips. Gateway will also have the opportunity to provide service to individuals who may be cut under other programs. So with the rope funds becoming available and the possibility of reimbursement for the first three months of the fiscal year, we will be able to continue operations under normal circumstances. I will continue to monitor this operation, and if necessary, will propose a reduction in service. This would be accomplished under varying degrees and would be brought to my Board of Directors for approval. The extreme would be to provide essential services only, such as dialysis appointments. However, this is, would be a very last resort due, due to the potential negative community impact and reduction in build revenue. As we are going through this additional challenge, I also see this as an opportunity to shine in our community and begin building the trust and respect as a valued asset to this county. The bottom line is that we know the government shutdown will end and grant funding will begin to flow again, sooner than we may think based on recent correspondence. In addition, we will have additional money available through the competitive grant that we were approved for to provide additional public transportation services. In the meantime, I will continue focusing on expenses and revenue, making necessary adjustments to build a strong financial model and bring, and begin building healthy operational reserves so we are not held hostage by conditions that are out of our control. I want to thank you for your continued support of the system and will keep you up to date with our progress and any further unexpected challenges that may arise. I'd be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you for your report, good report, thank you.
Okay, um, let's see, I get, who goes next? Well, let's, Health Department. Let's, Mr. Madden, if you would, come up, and any sports staff to assist him in this.
Good morning, Chairman King, good morning, Commissioners. Following Lynn, I'm gonna look a little, a little behind on the report because I don't quite have as a thorough report, because honestly, in our case, we have, we have some, a lot of unknown variables. The, I'll talk about the two programs that specifically we have information on, and that's the WIC program, and that's our maternal health and child health block grant called the Healthy Mothers, Healthy Children Money. And the, let's talk about the maternal health and child health block grant. That, that money is actually allocated into three programs that we have right now, and that is in our maternal health clinic, our family planning clinic, and our child health clinic. And as you know, we do have a, a large maternity health program. We have a fairly small child health program, and our family planning is a fairly moderate program, size program. That money has been currently zeroed out in the WRM, which is the reporting system that we use to pull down money from the state, state and federal passer dollars, has been zeroed out effective October. But we drew down money for June, July, August, and September. They had sent out a memo to us saying that we needed to restrict our drawdown to no greater than 28% of those funds, which we did. That covers us through those, those months. I'm not overly concerned at this time, assuming under the good auspices that, that the federal government is going to be working hopefully by the end of this month, but what we normally do, part of those programs are funded through county appropriations as well as our earned revenues. Normally, what our process is, is to draw down our state and federal monies first and utilize those in expenditure and to cover our expenditures, and then, of course, we use our revenues as, as they come in, and then we draw down our county appropriations at the end of the year. In this case, scenario would be that we would have, may have to carry through with our county appropriations first, and then hopefully draw down the money as it comes into the WRM available. So we would just rotate the sequence and how we would utilize our, our budgeted money. Worst-case scenario would be if, if they said no money was here, but we don't anticipate that, because currently, operating budgets have been intact. The WIC program's a little more of a, of a wild card for us. As you all may or may not know, as effective October the 8th, they basically ceased, sent a memo out by Danny Staley, the acting deputy director, acting, acting director of the Division of Public Health, sent out a memo to all health departments saying, effective October the 8th, that we would have maintained operating procedures as normal, but we would no longer issue vouchers, and we would no longer enroll new, new participants. That went for one week, and then they, and then the state sent us another memo out saying that, that they had found money to cover us through the month of October. So we are back enrolling and back issuing vouchers. That went on one, within one week, and it was a fairly mild disruption overall. I mean, the clients were very understanding, the staff was very, very supportive and cooperative in that. The question is, how will that play out in, at the end of October? Because right now, they, we have received no additional information about what, what's going to happen in, in their regards. That program is 99.5% federal, federal funding. The little, the little, small portion that is not federal dollars is administered, covers some administrative overhead, and it's a very small portion from, from the county's side. The impact of that is, would be important to the, to Wayne County, as you all know, Mr. Ray Cox mentioned it before, is supportive of the, of the benefit of, of the WIC program. We all know the benefit of it. They would be, if, if the money is not put in at the end of October, if they're not agreed upon, and that money is included back in when the budget's agreed, agreed upon, then it would have some impact on not just the clients, but the businesses that the clients utilize their WIC vouchers through. But I did have some percentages of budgets, just so you understand, our state money, state and federal dollars. Our family planning money, the exact state amount of that budget from a percent is 10%. It's what we get is state and federal money. Maternal health is 8%, and child health is 31%. And the reason why child health, like I said, is, is one of our smallest of those three programs, is that it's a larger percentage, is because, again, that program is not very large, and the total operating budget on that program is 300 and, $313,000.
What percent? I'm sorry.
31%.
Mr. King, sorry.
So that's where we stand right now. Concern from my part, yes, we, you know, we have concern about the, you know, the Congress and legislators resolving the issue, hopefully in a timely fashion, and the maternal health, child health money, like I said, we do have a contingency plan on that, and that's just basically rotating how we utilize our funding and our budget. It shouldn't change our budget. WIC is a different animal, just depending on what they do, because like I said, right now, we're covered through October, and with no additional information on where to go after that as of this time. And I have Ken Stern, administrative officer here, deals regularly with the budget, we have Stephanie Howard, the director of the WIC program, in case you have any specific questions that I can, cannot answer.
Mr. Page.
Do have a question, and I truly believe there'll be some sort of agreement in Washington before we face this deadline. Yeah, of course, I need Crystal Ball to do that. But, you know, the WIC program, what's the dollar amount ballpark that it costs per month? You know, if, you know, it came to the end of the month and nothing happened?
The cost per month to operate the WIC program? Well, I can divide that by 12.
Yeah, it's around $50,000 or so. That's a ballpark.
I think the total operating budget's 880?
Eighty-one.
$881,000, the total operating budget.
Hope you don't face that, though, I just need to.
Absolutely, absolutely. Like I said, we rely on that in multiple ways for, for our county.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, guys. Ken, Stephanie, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you. All right, well, that's Debbie, and it's a step down again. Vicki here, Debbie Jones, and Vicki Hill are here this morning, and, you know, we've had, and I appreciate last week and the, the last few days, as they come up, the staff reacting, doing the research, staying on top of this on a hour-by-hour ba, you know, basis, literally, so, for these all to the board.
It is, and for Marsha, and that, good morning.
Good morning.
My report is more intensive in the sense that it is very dollar-specific. So I have provided some written information for you. For those of you who are visual, like I am, it might help you to actually see it. The federal shutdown has impacted us a great deal. The largest concern that I have is with the childcare subsidy funding. We pay, we make monthly childcare payments to 79 providers for low-income families. 62 of these providers are Wayne County businesses, and it, the average is about $350,000 per month. Those funds are not available to us at this time. We do have enough funds, the state does have enough funds, that we can take care of the September service month, which is paid in October. But we only have enough funds to take care of about three weeks of October service month. That's, that's of concern. If we do not suspend services, and if the shutdown continues, then we would be looking at all county dollars. Now, the state did tell us yesterday, and we're having constant phone calls, there were two conference calls yesterday, the news is coming fast and furious for us. The information we received yesterday was that the state wanted us and continue to find the funding so that we could serve three categories of children for childcare up through December. Those categories would be child protective services, child welfare, and developmental needs. After December, if there's still a shutdown, there will be no funds to serve those children Would you like to discuss these as we go along or at the end? If you have questions?
Just give us your information.
Okay. TANF, Temporary Assistance to Needy Families, which is the Work First Program. This is the program that used to be known as AFDC, the old welfare check system. The state yesterday has informed us that we are to stop all of those services. There will be no checks issued for the month of November. They will continue to receive Medicaid cards because that is a part of the service, that won't be affected. There will not be check amounts going out. They vary, $181 to $272, depending on children in the household. That will affect 351 households in the county. 114 of those cases are actually actively involved in employment services, meaning they're looking for jobs, they're going to school, and they're getting the services that assist in that. Those part of that services would be childcare, transportation through Gateway. All of those services have come to an end as of yesterday. There is a small amount of funding through TANF, CPS, Temporary Assistance, Child Protective Services, those funds are no longer available to us. At this time, we can cover child welfare expenses by dipping into some of our other pots of money. Crisis intervention, crisis energy payments to low-income households experiencing a heating crisis, we have gotten some allocation so far. We do have close to $500,000 that we can continue to spend till those funds are exhausted. We were anticipating approximately $800,000 in LEAP payments, which are payments one time per year that go to the providers to assist low-income households with heating crises. We did not budget that because as Mr. Smith explained, until you get those funds, you're not for sure that you're getting those. However, that will have an impact on households and local businesses if those funds do not come through. Social Services Block Grant is of large concern to me. That is where the majority of our funding comes from to provide adult services. The two largest components of that are adult protective services and guardianship services, and those cases are growing exponentially as the baby boomers age. We're seeing more and more of those cases that come in. And it's, as I can tell you, it's a very fluid situation. We have another call this afternoon, and it's, it's a daily update. Any questions, concerns, comments?
One question. When does your board meet? I forgot, I was on it for four years, but I've, I've just forgotten what day it is.
The last Monday of the month. I believe it's the 27th this month.
Were you able to give your board any indication of what the shutdown would be like prior to October 1 at your last board meeting?
No.
Have you called an emergency meeting with your board to discuss these issues?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Page.
I had asked Debbie Lee a email about reimbursement. I asked her, and she was not in a role she's in now, when the last shutdown happened in '95, trying to determine whether, if the county picks up, has to pick up and pay some of this, whether there's a reimbursement, what the process was. Have you heard any information about that through your phone calls? You know, I bet you called, talked to in Raleigh, if we were to pick it up. Do we get our money back?
Will we get our money back?
Are we just gonna subsidize the federal government, which I don't want us to do?
The answers range from possibly, perhaps, likely, maybe.
Maybe.
And, and there is no guarantee, that's the one thing that everybody agrees on. I will tell you that I had my staff survey all 100 counties yesterday to see what the other counties were doing. Of the counties that responded, 36 have already suspended services for childcare and notified families and providers that they will not be covering. And many others are taking a wait-and-see approach. I think after the 17th, several others will make a decision as well.
And I know you're having extended phone calls, and I hope you will bring us up this speed, as you.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, if you learn something in between, please inform me.
Will do.
Any other questions? Mr. Carmody.
Well, I think I have a question, a common next question, Mr. Smith and the director. If the federal funds are suspended, and I heard you say it will become all county money, how would that operate, Mr.? What would, what would actually take place?
Well, it depends on the program, but I know, for instance, on the childcare piece, we have to serve the 10-day, is it the suspension notice, or?
No, actually.
What's the process on that end?
If, if we terminate services to family, there is a mandatory 10-day, 10-business-day notification. However, that's not what's being recommended, because termination puts those individuals at the very back of the waiting list.
You gotta start over.
We do have a large waiting list. And we do have a large waiting list that have to start all over again. So the recommendation is to suspend services, which you can do immediately. You do not have to give a notice. Although best practice would be to let families know that on such-and-such-a-date, your childcare services will stop. And then it's a matter of if we, when the funding comes in, we resume services again.
And going back to your question, one thing, when we met, this was, and I thought it was important that we, because we all wanted to understand, what does this notice mean, suspension versus termination, because we were hearing all kinds of things across the state. But, you know, it would, and I, we talked about it a little bit the other day, so this is kind of open discussion, Ms. Chairman, but as far as advising, as far as any action to be taken, can we serve at least notice or put folks on notice that this has potential for suspension? In other words, if by this date, whatever that, we choose that date to be, that suspensions may occur, something that lets them know they need to be looking at it, at least to warn them, because you don't want to, and also, and people are working or going to school. I mean, they shut down. I mean, you know, so.
My response to that would be going back to my question a few minutes ago, is, you know, obviously, it's a state board. It's a board that's, that's put together to guide and direct Ms. Jones, and she serves at the pleasure of her board. And we need to get some indication from the board on how they want to proceed in all of this, as Mr. Madden with the Health Department, the same way Mr. Dotter serves on the Health Board, Mr. Bill Page serves on the DSS Board, is that you have funds that are attributed to all of these issues, and you use those funds first, and then you come back and use the county funds second. But then if you move, as Mr. Madden said, you move to operate off your local funds first, hoping to get reimbursement in the future, and you've just indicated it could be a 5 percent chance, a 30 or 50, or maybe 100 percent chance, we don't know, uncertain. But I would certainly rather take some direction from that board, because they certainly understand it a whole lot more than I do as a layman sitting up here as a board member, with a chair, and sit on that board for four years. I know how important that board is, and that board gives great direction, and I know when I served, the direction that we would submit to the Commissioners as far as budget and all of these items that we have to sustain, issues that we sustain our programs. I would just like to get some direction from your board. And if your board meets at the end of the month, which is the last Monday, and then, of course, if we meet, we have our meeting on the 1st of November, which will be the 4th, I believe, the first meeting in November. You know, it gets to the end of the month, and I'm not sure, I think you'll have a good hold on it by then, but if we need to act on something, then I'd like to see some direction from their board.
I mean, are they, I know you were looking at other counties, and how many did you say actually did?
Have suspended?
Yeah.
36. And those counties are taking their direction from their Commissioners because the funding, there is no local dollars in the childcare, other than some in admin. That's all federal pass-through. So if we go past three weeks in October, then this Board of Commissioners will be looking at funding those services. I think the general feeling has been that it's a Board of Commissioners' decision rather than a DSS.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
Then that's why we'll use our association. If a third of the counties in the state are having this issue, and they're not depending on the board, a DSS board, and they're depending on the Commissioners, then in fact, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, Mr. David Thompson, they're on top of this as if, in fact, these adjustments are being made, these expenditures are being made by the Commissioners. So I would ask you to get on the phone with David Thompson and the Association and get a feel of how, of how they're dealing with it, then, to get some direction.
We can do that today, and then get something back. I mean, we can call meetings, do whatever we need to do to take care of that, because it's a huge expenditure for us, so, you know. And I think Debbie's right in looking at it because it requires budget amendments, they pass it on to boards committees, and I understand that, and I understand why, so, you know, because they don't have the ability to change the budget. So, you know, we can do that today.
Any comments, questions? Mr. Bell.
I would just like to make one brief comment. It's kind of personal with me. When I think about the 500 and some elected officials that we have up in Washington, only one has refused to take his pay. All of those guys are getting paid, guys and ladies are getting paid, while all these other people out here are suffering, federal employees, military persons, veterans, and they are receiving their pay, full pay, with no cuts. That's disgusting.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Any other comments? Ms. Jones. Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. Vicki. Pam, is there anything you wanted to bring up on referencing the programs or thoughts you have on?
As Mr. Smith said, we have brought the main ones to you, had departments speak. We have the other departments here, but it doesn't impact them as much. Myself and Angie Boswell, working with me in the Finance Office, have actually been through every grant, and some of our grants go through the state, but they're actually funded through the federal government. So we've took them all apart. We've emailed every department and had, and are hearing back correspondents every day, not only with our department heads, but also with the state and federal government. So things, as they have said previously, things are changing hourly, and so we're just trying to stay on top of it. We are watching the date of the 17th.
So I think we're on it, and wherever these little trips are, we've got people watching them, so if something slipped past, I'm gonna be surprised, because literally, as Pam said, about once every hour or two, something comes in from a department or an agency. So it's continuous, so we're monitoring.
Thank you so much for monitoring it like you are. Of course, we can always call emergency session.
Absolutely.
Anytime that you see fit, Mr. Smith is manager.
If something's gonna cost a half a million dollars, I would think that's an emergency, by the way, Mr. Attorney. That's a lot of money.
Any other comments from Commissioners?
I think you just answered that, Mr. Chairman, and that is, in the event that this gets deeper into it and you need to call us in decision, I assume that you'd get with the chairman to do that.
Absolutely. And under the advisement of the department managers, Ms. Holt, then I would call the Chair.
Sure. Thank you. Mr. Dotter, any other comments? Mr. Smith?
Thank you.
Thank you.